We had quite a good turnout, actually.
Yeah.
So.
All right, hello all. Thank you for joining us this morning on a Saturday. Appreciate you taking your Saturday to be with the library. Today, we're going to go over some interior design for the renovated library. Keep in mind that our furniture fixtures and equipment, our FFNE is being fundraised for, so it is not part of the grant. And we have contracted with TSK Architects to do our FFNE procurement services. So once again, I know you've seen this face before, but this is Jonathan from TSK, and I'm gonna let him tell you more about the interior design for our renovated library.
Yes, yes. Well, thanks all. I'm excited to be here with you this morning. Also, joining me is April Waltman. She's on my computer. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get the IT set up to where we could get her more formally here, but she's listening in, and she's really our furniture expert. But what we're really looking to do this morning is we really wanna hear from the community about what type of furniture you would like to see in the library. So we haven't chosen any furniture. We're just actually at the beginning stages of determining the feeling, the mood, what types of furniture we're gonna be putting into each space, whether that's the children's room, the teen scene, or just out in the library stacks in general. And so what we wanna do today is I'm gonna go ahead and run through some of the renderings that you have all seen before, show you just kind of a little bit of how we think about things in terms of splitting types of furniture up by spaces. And then really, we would love to hear from you all about what type of furniture you would like to see. You are gonna see that we do have some furniture in our slides. We haven't chosen those. That's really representational of types of furniture that there could be. You know, some of the things that we really wanna do is meet the users in terms of different uses for each space. And we're also, you know, interested in trying to kinda maintain some of the mid-century modern design that is going on in the library as a whole. And so I'm gonna go ahead and jump in here and just start running through. We have a slide deck to show you that again is looking at the different spaces to kinda get your thoughts going about the type of furniture you would like to see. All right, so first of all, I apologize. It's easier to see on the TVs than it is on the screen, so you might wanna look at those. But you know, we have a series of different spaces in the library. So while it is one holistic library, there's different use spaces along there. So there's the library stacks where the majority of our book collections are gonna be. We also have a teens room dedicated to teens, a children's room, some quiet reading rooms, and also some other reading areas towards the north of the library, up by the big windows in the front. We have, you know, some program and study space that has the opportunity to have maker space type qualities to it. We also have a community meeting room that can be used both for library programming as well as be rentable by the community, and then our archive space. And so we wanna look at each one of these, and what types of furniture do we want in each? Where do we want study spaces versus soft seating? Where do we want low tables versus high tables? So this is an updated floor plan of where we're at currently with the library. It's basically taking those programmatic elements and really making them into what we are gonna find once the library is fully built. As you guys probably all know from seeing the construction fences, it's currently being worked on. And so as it's completed, this is what you're gonna find. These are the same floor plans that are on our easel boards up here, if you wanna go ahead and come look at those afterwards. And so as I mentioned before, the yellow is kind of that library stack area. The kinda salminy pink color is our program area. The green is specific use types, so those are our quiet reading rooms, our teen scene, our kids' room, as well as our outdoor reading balcony. And so we're just trying to break up the various spaces of the library kind of by use here, because that also helps us from a furniture standpoint. So as you can see here, and again, I apologize, it's a little hard to read on the screen, but if you come down to the board afterwards, you can see that we have a series of questions, and those are questions that we'd love for you to take a little bit of time to just come and look at, to help jog your thinking in terms of what type of furniture do you wanna see? You know, do you prefer soft lounge-type chairs, or do you prefer a normal chair with maybe a cushion on it? Do you prefer bean bags, or, you know, or wooden chairs? Really, we wanna hear from all of you about what kind of seats you wanna sit in when you're enjoying the library. You know, when you're in a study space, do you wanna sit at a group study table, or would you prefer a single kind of solitary study corral? And so these are a series of questions that we would love for you to come and read. I won't read through every single one of them here. And then after this meeting, we're also gonna put these boards up in the library. So if you need more time to think over things, you can go ahead and think for a while, and then come in and stick some sticky notes on there about your interests, what you would like to see in the library. But let's look at it more from kind of an interiors perspective. What are we gonna find in here? So this is a view on the first floor, coming in from Sierra Madre Boulevard, and towards the kind of the main entry of the library on that north side of the building. We have our main circulation desk here. That circulation desk design has changed a little bit. It's actually gotten mirrored, which is not here in the rendering, but it's basically the same way. But what you can begin to see is some of the things that we're looking at, such as the library stacks, the bookshelves themselves, and then different seating areas in the library. So for example, this rendering is coming in from the south side, from our new entry off of Mariposa Avenue. And as you come up that stairs, we really have some opportunities for some seating right there. What kind of seating do we want? Do we want it to be study tables? Do we want it to be soft seating? One of the ways that we programmed the library originally, coming back to the floor plan here, is we were looking to try to create a gradation from a gradation from loud spaces to quiet spaces. And so we were trying to stick some of our spaces that are likely to have a little bit more loudness towards the south side of the library, such as the children's room and the teen scene, and then some of our quieter spaces towards the north, our quiet reading rooms. And so again, thinking about types of furniture that we may wanna see here, are these better to be study corrals because of that, or are they better to be soft seating and a little bit more gathering spaces? So there's an opportunity for seating right here, as well as again, looking at book stacks, potentially more seating along the walls on the outside as well. So again, this is just some beginning ideas of what furniture could be for the library. You know, trying to look at things that fit some of that mid-century modern feel and look to them, but without us having made any decisions here. And so you can feel free to comment if you like or don't like any of these, but I would just take this as a grain of salt, as just some beginning ideas to get your mind thinking in terms of what could be in the library. Everything from a chair down to your seat to little side tables next to you, where you might wanna stick your bag or stick a book. And so those are the types of things that we want you to think through as well, is holistically, from the biggest chair down to, you know, I'd really love to see some plants along in the library as well. Coming down over here to the teen scene, we have a nice set of glazing into the teen scenes. We have good visibility in there. And, you know, what kind of spaces do we wanna see outside that entry? You know, here's an area that we originally had thought of being a study area against that back wall where there's a window. Let's see, do I have a laser on here? No. But if you look along this wall right here, that's kind of our printer wall, so we have some opportunity for a printer station up there, as well as, I know the library is looking at having checkable laptops and equipment like that. And then outside that area is what we were looking at as potential study area. But I know, I've probably said this many times, and I say it again, we really wanna hear from you. You know, as those who are really using the library, we'll bring our expertise in, but we wanna know what's gonna best suit the needs of this community and of the individuals who are using it. So as you can see, there's opportunities for things like open tables or for individual pods where you feel like you can get separated a little bit more from everyone around you in order to study or read. Looking at the teen room itself, you know, one of the things that we were looking at is potentially providing a large table for the teens to be able to do Dungeons and Dragons, or to play other games together, an opportunity for them to study together. So what type of furniture would you wanna see in there for your teens, or for teens, any teens in the room, that you would wanna use as well? Looking at the children's room, you know, do we wanna have more low tables for kids or more high tables for parents to be able to sit at more easily with their kids? Do we wanna have playable furniture? So you see, there's actually a lot of fun children's furniture for libraries that kind of have a nice mix of being something to play on, as well as something to sit down and read. You know, do we want more areas for games for kids in there? And then looking at that lower level entry, that program space, you know, we had kinda, as you can see here in the rendering, had left that almost as an open kind of study space, flexible. But we have heard from the community that there's interest in a maker space. And so something that we can begin to look at is furniture like here on the bottom left, where it's a movable maker space capsule in a way, where we can actually bring out some of the equipment, put it on there, has opportunity for storage in there. It can be rolled away when that space needs to be used for something else, but it really has the opportunity to operate as a maker space with 3D printers and other equipment that the library invests in down in that area. And then looking into our community meeting room, you know, some of the things that we wanna look at is what kind of furniture is best gonna be flexible for the library in terms of being able to be used for library programming, as well as being able to be used well for any community members who might wanna rent the space and use it for a function. We do have a small storage room in the back to be able to store the furniture. And so one of the things that's gonna be very important for us is finding furniture that is easily storable, to give the greatest flexibility of that space as possible for the community. And then here just shows you, just for fun, a section through the new addition of the library. So you can see here in the top left, this is that new section of book stack area. So if you look through that hole all the way back, that's the existing entry off of Sierra Madre Boulevard on the north side. We have our new kids' room right here on the right, our new community meeting room right here, and then that program maker space in this area. So you'll notice we also have our new elevator that's taking us between the floors. We have an area for a donation wall, so people who wanna donate and really build into the library, we have some nice wood slabs here for that. And then as you go through these doors, that'll take you back into the archive space. The friends of the library are also back here hidden behind these walls, and then we have a couple of restrooms as well. So that, sorry, that's kind of our formal presentation in terms of, again, really, our goal here is to get your mind thinking about what type of furniture you would like to see in the library, because that's what we really wanna achieve today, is really hearing from you. So I'd love to hear any questions you have. I don't know how informal we wanna go. We also have the board and sticky notes up here for you to be able to write ideas on there, and put that for us to be able to respond to.
So for anyone who does have comments, if you could come up to the podium, it'll be first come, first served. But if you don't mind coming up to the podium so that anyone who's watching at home, and we are recording this as well, that will be able to capture your input. Feel free to line up.
Everybody's shy.
Hi, my name is Diane Sands. I am a member of the trustees. Knowing that we have a budget, and a tight budget, and that we are our foundation, our library foundation is soliciting donations to furnish the inside of the library, will that budget limit us, I would imagine it would, on what types of furniture that can be purchased? Obviously, with budget limitations, we're not gonna purchase all Herman Miller furniture or something. So, you know, if you could speak just a little bit to that, will you be giving us a selection of choices at some point to look at and kind of get some input on that? I can imagine it's not the sky's the limit, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna try. We're gonna try this. Since April is our furniture expert, I'm gonna try to have her answer. We did talk about this, so I will try to answer if she's unable to, but let me see if this'll work. April, did you hear that question?
I did. And currently, with the budget, we're looking at about 1.2 million to include equipment, and that's also with a 20% contingency. So we should be able to make our vision happen. 1.2 would be the sweet spot. Anything further than that would be an added bonus, where we could spend more time looking into the children's area and giving them extra trees and visuals that we had originally wanted to give that children's room.
And to confirm, April, does that include the, for the equipment as well, or is that just for the furniture?
That would include the equipment that's been on the schedule for the construction documents. That roughly came out to about 40,000.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kiera Bender. I am an occupational therapist and an accessibility consultant as well. This is my first time joining one of these meetings, so it's great to hear about all the hard work going into this project already. But sort of where I'm jumping in is bringing to the forefront the consideration for patrons with disabilities, families with children with disabilities, and also to share a little bit of my experience as I'm currently consulting on a project with LA Public Libraries in order to create sensory-friendly spaces for children and teens. It's currently in progress. It's a grant-funded project as well. But I'm glad to share some images and some photos of the work in progress, but also just to bring to the conversation the consideration of patrons with a variety of different disabilities, different needs. Furniture really relates a lot to that, to be able to navigate around, but also provides an opportunity to be able to create moments of accessibility. Thinking about things like flexible seating, alternative seating, especially for children and teens, can be a great way to incorporate accessibility into the image, the visual that is presented to the community. Yeah, not really a question, just sort of bringing to the conversation.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you for that input. That's definitely something that we want to be true for this library. So from the very beginning, you know, Sierra Madre does a wonderful job at this, but this needs to be a library for everyone. And so that's why in our planning of it, we specifically had created areas for different users, knowing that different users need different things. And disability brings just another level on top of that. But having the correct furniture that's gonna meet the needs from seniors down to kids is something we definitely want to have employed here. And I can let April speak a little bit more to that, but that, thank you for that comment, because that is something we wanna make sure that we are hitting upon. April, do you have anything to add to that?
Absolutely. We will make sure that we are looking at furniture that is suitable for all age groups, that have the BIFMA ratings, that support a multitude of types of people, such as wanting to make sure your seat heights are 18 inches for the ease and convenience of getting out. We don't want to put in the European standards where the seats are super low and very small. I don't know if you've seen those. But also with the children's area, there's so many great brands and manufacturers that really talk to the sensory needs of children. And actually, we have a question on the board talking to the sensory requests. And I do implore you to take a look, and if you have any favorites, please share your favorite that you've seen at other libraries, or you know have worked fantastically in the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And I do, I have some printouts.
Oh, great. Yeah, I'll take this, yeah.
Just to share with anyone after, or anything like that.
And you're also welcome to email, even after this, any comments or resources directly to me. I'm Leila, I'm the City Librarian, for those that don't know me. You can email me directly at L R E G A N at sierra madre ca.gov.
Great, yeah. And these spaces with LA libraries that I'm working on, they're set to open in March and April, so maybe a group field trip to visit, to check them out, yeah.
I have been taking my staff around to other libraries, just to see the functionality of other libraries. Oddly enough, one of my favorites is actually La Pintaresca in Pasadena, because it's small, and it's, you know, the Roman, it's the Roman cross architectural design, and they somehow make it work, so.
Well, it's been a really great experience to work with librarians, and then they bring their expertise to the project as well. And just, libraries are really just so well-understood to be a public resource and a place for everyone, like you said. So I think it's the perfect sort of collaboration and opportunity to consider everybody and their use of the space.
Yeah, and if we jump back to the slides here. I guess I can do it. I can do it here.
And thank you for that comment.
See if I can find the correct slide here. Oh, I think we might have taken it out in a version. You know, but to your point of looking towards users in every phase and stage and, you know, walk of life, you know, one of the things we're even looking at is, you know, for people in situations like a single mom who might wanna come and use the library, you know, do we have the study corrals that have a child PlayStation next to it built in? And so originally, we had one of those pictures on. I think in our versions, we removed that. But we really do wanna make sure that we're really meeting the needs. And so that's why you all are so important, because you know the needs better than we do. We know it from our experience on projects, but you know it from living in this community. And so we'd love to hear from you.
It's also gonna be the first time our library will be ADA compliant.
Yeah.
So I was like, yay.
Hello, my name is Michael Murphy. So I've been coming to the library with my kids since they were toddlers, even younger, and I love our library. I love the librarians, the space. It really is a gem in our community. So thank you. I'm looking forward to the new version of it as it opens. I think you were looking for like use cases, and how would we use that space? So I just wanted to share one of the ways I used the children's room when my kids were a little younger. I loved the children's room. It was a contained space. I could keep an eye on them. And there was like one or two adult chairs in that space, and I would always beeline to that chair, you know, as an adult, 'cause they were comfortable. And, you know, one of the reasons I would do that is I wanted my kids to independently play in the children's space and not be with them. I mean, I was close, but I wanted them to independently play. So I would grab that chair, I would grab a book, they would see me reading, and I could keep an eye on them, but I also let them explore, and I was also comfortable at the same time. So if you could find like a good mix of, you know, equipment or chairs for the kids, but then a few chairs for the parents, you know, it makes it easier to come to the library.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. And then I think the second one is maybe for the teen room. I really like the idea of that being a community space for teens, where you encourage them to come together. So if the furniture supports that kind of environment, that really makes sense. And, yeah, and then the rest looks great.
Great.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Yeah, as you can see, I'm not a small man. Sitting on those kids' chairs just doesn't work for me, so.
I will say for the teen room, the library staff in October all went to the California Library Association Conference, where they tend to have vendors of different things, and one of them was this thing called a nook, which is not the Barnes and Noble's e-reader. It's no more. But it was like, it was basically like if you took like a shed and cut it in half, and it had like seating for two, and it looked like a little mini house. And I actually looked at having that, because it was just a cute little, you know, they could be away, but not really. So there's a lot out there that I did not realize until I actually started looking at furniture for libraries.
Yeah, and again, going to, you know, the different things you wanna see. When we were originally designing the library, you know, we've looked at those types of furniture as well, and you can buy them as furniture systems, or they can be custom-built. But we had areas in the library that we were thinking, you know, some of those, instead of book stacks against the wall, might be little nooks along the wall. Again, trying to find a variety of spaces, because some people wanna be out in the open amongst everything. Some people wanna be tucked away by themselves. And so really trying to provide each of those opportunities, so that however you prefer to read, to study, to, you know, commune with the other members to, you know, commune with the other members of the community, you know, the, that opportunity is in the library somewhere for you. So just, there's something to think through as you're making comments on the type of furniture that you would like to see.
Hi, I'm Catherine Addy, and I'm also a trustee of our library. Um, I do a lot of, uh, I have a travel agency, and I've noticed that when I go to hotels, they're all being upgraded to where their pieces of furniture have, um, USB ports and charging thingies. And the thing that I do like about our, our previous library, um, was the, uh, little tables that are movable, but maybe some that would be stationary, so that when you're over in a nook and you run out of power, it's nice to have a USB port that's built into the little side table. So that's just something that I, I think is kind of important. And also, I want to give kudos to our library, because during the Eaton fire, we had to evacuate, and there was no power at our hotel. Um, but the library was powered at, so the day after, we drove into town and no power anywhere, but we could charge our devices up at the library, and that was pretty important.
That's great. Yeah, we, we do currently have floor boxes, uh, planned in some areas of the library to go where we're putting seating, to try to be able to provide, um, some locations with that type of service.
I'm, I'm gonna mention one comment that has been brought up to me before Rob walks on up. And that is, um, Pete Sibberle is, uh, well-known in town, but he wants to possibly be able to have some, uh, local artist areas. So just when it comes to planning, if we can, um, think of a, a, a place where we can put up some local artists. And so that has been mentioned to me, so I'm mentioning it now so that we're all aware, um, just to have kind of rotating artists.
Yeah, I can already think of about four locations.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can find more. Yeah.
That would be great.
I feel a little bit like, my, one of my favorite movies is Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid, and I feel a little bit like that guy with the bicycle who walks up when they're, you know, trying to rally the posse to go after Butch and, and the Sundance Kid, and he says something to the effect, "Well, as long as we have a crowd here, let me make my pitch." So I'm gonna do that. Um, so I'm, I'm here for the Sierra Madre Library Foundation. And for those that are, um, not here but are gonna be watching, I invite you to come to the website, sierramadrelibri foundation dot org, and learn a little bit more about, um, the foundation so that we can do some of these, um, exciting things that we're talking about as far as furnishing the, uh, the library. And, um, I do have cards back there. If you wanna fill out a card and give us some information, that would be great. But I, I'm, I'm sort of interested also in, in the idea of perhaps a grant that helps with the accessibility issue. That, that's an exciting opportunity too, so we might wanna investigate that. We are in the process of looking for grants in addition to donors. Um, so I hope that people will come down to the library, mark up the board. Um, I'm sure you're gonna be soliciting, um, input from teens and, and parents and things like that. So I really applaud that you're, you're doing it at this stage when there's the opportunity to really, um, have an impact on how the inside of the library looks. 'Cause I think that's gonna be the exciting thing for this community is walking in the door the first day and seeing how fabulous it is. So thank you for doing that.
Our pleasure.
I'm sure Jonathan can talk to you how bare-bones the library is right now.
Yes, it is stripped down to stud. So it's, uh, y- you know, if you have a vision for what's to come, it's very exciting.
I, I will say I'm, uh, grateful to Jonathan for, A, being here, and also for April. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, we did decide to do a Makerspace downstairs, and I didn't know if that was gonna impact a lot. And, um, I do have to say I'm thankful that Jonathan was like, "We can make that work," so.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah, on, on the board that we currently have in the library, that was something that we, we put up as an option of what would you like to see in the library, and Makerspace got a lot more traction than I would've guessed. So, so we're really excited to be able to bring that, because we do have 3D printers at the library. We do have a cr- uh, cricket. We have sewing machines. Um, I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
Felting.
Oh, yeah, we had felting. Um, and we, we are looking forward to being able to offer that to the community, um, in, in a way. And even with some of these, uh, like in the reading area, um, I am gonna get a fireplace in there. I know it's not gonna serve any purpose. I am gonna get a fireplace in there, but I also thought it would be a nice way for, um, what I refer to as a, as quiet crafts, where, you know, once a week you could, um, come in with a group and we can do knitting around the fireplace or crocheting or quilting or something where you're engaged, um, softly. Uh, so it wouldn't be disruptive, but it is nice to see that there are spaces where we can accommodate things like that, and especially the programming space, because that was kind of, um, a, um, an issue that the library has faced of, if you don't know that we're hosting a program in the old library and you walked in and you see, you know, eighty kids cheering over bubbles, it gets kind of, um, it, it can be a little disorientating when you just wanna come in and read quietly. So being able to have a space where we won't be disrupting or rolling out tables into the stacks or having to transform rooms, um, it's, I'm really excited about it. So I was, I was very excited to hear, um, the public's input on what they would like, because I know what I like, but I'm, I'm only seeing it from a different level. So thank you all for being here.
Yes, thank you so much.
I was gonna say, Shannon, do you have any comments about the staff side of things? Right now she's working in the temporary library in, in the vault, so, so I'm sure anything is an improvement over an old bank vault, but.
Hi, well, thanks for asking. I'm Shannon. I do work at the library. I'm also a citizen here in town, and I love the library, of course. Um, I just love that people are coming in, and they are. They're using those boards and putting their comments. So I, I encourage everyone to come and read these questions and do that so that we continue to learn more. But we do have lots of requests for people to have places they wanna play games, whether it's puzzles or games with their kids or even getting a group together for the Dungeons and Dragons or all sorts of things. So I'm, I'm hoping in this new space, there is an area where, as you were saying, people can do that without disrupting those who wanna come in and read. But we have all sorts of cool stuff, whether it's the steam equipment or the robots or the hiking backpacks or DVD players, or there's all sorts of things. So it'll be interesting to see how we display that. Like, my mind's just kind of racing, like, where is all this gonna go? And how are, how are people gonna find it when they come in and?
And for, on the staff side, I would like to point out that the staff now has an actual break room. We've never had that before.
Yay.
And an actual, uh, uh, believe a cart corral is what we're calling it, where we can keep all of our carts. We also never had that before.
Yeah.
So I'm, right, right now at the temporary library, we are all kind of packed into one area. Or, or we're in the vault.
Or in the vault. Yeah, that's been interesting.
Or we're with the archives. So we're, um, looking forward to being able to have that functionality for staff so we can better serve our community.
Yeah, and the equipment, I know you mentioned in the bottom section, there'll be an area to store like tables and chairs so that if that space is needed for something else, will, will those items ever be moved upstairs? Or are we looking at equipment all on one level and we won't have to use an elevator or move things or?
Right, we're pretty, for the most part, we're looking at it being dedicated to an area. Uh, that's not to say you couldn't move it, um, but the storage, you know, in the community meeting space really is meant for the chairs in the community meeting space. And there's some storage in the, it's kind of more of a little bit of a workroom slash storage in the kids' area.
Okay.
You know, so i- it's, we're trying to mostly design for that location. But again, that's not to say that if you weren't having a function where you needed more chairs, you could use the lib- the elevator, so now you don't have to cart things up and down.
Which is great, 'cause as Leila mentioned, in the old location, we were physically rolling tables into the stacks to make room for people. So it's great to hear that there'll be a space dedicated on each level for whatever these items are that i- if we need to, we can move them, but.
Yeah.
And no more dumbwaiter.
And no more falling-down spiral staircases.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So thank you. I'm very excited.
Thank you, Shannon.
Hi.
Oh. I know him too.
Hi, I'm Frank Moore. I am Frank Moore. Shannon's my better half. Just wanted to, sorry if I missed it, but can we, can we get an overall update on timing? Are we on budget? When are we gonna have this grand opening event, so I can put it in our calendars?
So as of right now, we're looking at, it's gonna be towards the beginning of 2026.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, sometime, I, it's either late January or I believe in February is when we're looking to have substantial completion done for the library.
And that's on schedule?
We're a little, uh, backed up right now. Um, you know, it's the, the challenge of working with any existing building is that you find lots of stuff you didn't know you were gonna find.
You should tell them some of the things you found.
Yeah, so, well, uh, as some examples, um, when we, uh, stripped off all the Jipboard, we found a series of columns that were nowhere designated any of the plans, and they were holding up, I'll just say, some sketchy framing, including broken beams that someone had just run a wire underneath to hold the beam in place. So we're finding things like that, which then, you know, that causes adjustments that have to be made. Um, you know, we found that the foundation wasn't built the way it was supposed to be fa- built. Um, and so we're having to adjust to each of those as they come up. But in general, we're pretty, pretty closely on track to where we wanted to be, um, to hit towards the beginning of 2026.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for all you're doing.
Oh, yeah. My pleasure.
As far as when the building will open, the temporary library will stay open through January 2026. Possibly February, depending, but, um, absolutely through January 2026, and then we will start to transition back. We are gonna take, a lot of the, staff is gonna have to take a lot of time to marry the books that we currently have with the books that are in storage. So we are looking at, the very latest we'll reopen will be, uh, June 2026.
All right, thank you.
Hi, so, um, when we were coming to this meeting, I was thinking about how some other libraries have like, some, some libraries have like animals for kids to read with and just like areas for people with social anxiety or like anxiety in general. So animals can help with that, and I was just wondering if there were any plans for something like that, like the nook, that's something, but like, anything else?
So I have a few ideas that I'm not sure logistically how they're gonna work, but, but I would like, um, I don't know if you've seen the sensory hanging, uh, like sacks. I wanted to have one of those and have it secured at the bottom so that you can't like swing. But, but that was something I was thinking of. Um, I'm working really hard to get staff on board with getting a bearded dragon. I don't, I don't, I think I'm the only one that wants the bearded dragon. But it, it was one that, um, they did say they would go with fish, so we might have some fish. Uh, we do have, um, a therapy dog that comes in once a month that you can read to. Right now it's Ohana. They were just there on Wednesday. And so we would love more input like that. If you don't mind sharing as we keep going, I would love to hear more about, um, little sensory areas. My, my daughter is autistic nonverbal, so I accommodate, I know that's, that, uh, narrow view of it, but, um, I would love more ideas on what we can add. Um, that would be great. But yes, I'm still working for a bearded dragon. We'll see. We'll see how it goes.
Well, you have my vote on the bearded dragon.
See? You heard it, Shannon.
Not a Russian desert tortoise.
No.
I just had one more comment about furniture in the community room. Um, first of all, I love the fact that we're gonna have a community room, because, um, for example, our One Book One City, when we have a play or a, a reading of some sort, we have to take it over to the playhouse, because, um, I think we probably broke some rules on one of them when we had too many people, um, for one of the presentations that we had for One Book One City. And also, um, so for the chairs, we, we've also had the Travelers and Collectors Series in the past. I know Rob presented one of his vacations once, and, um, we've had travel programs. So that would be perfect for that. So the chairs, then, I would recommend that they be not so hard, but a little more comfortable, because if it's over an hour, people start getting fidgety. We all know what it's like to go to the Hollywood Bowl and sit on those benches. Uh, you know, if you don't have a pad. So that's just my suggestion in a long-winded way that, um, I'd like to see comfort with the chairs, even though I know they have to be portable and moved out of the way.
Yeah, that'll be our strike zone, is like the perfect marrying of comfort and collapsibility for storage.
And, and then how many, how many, uh, is in the community room? I've forgotten.
I believe it's, it's, I, I don't remember off the top of my head. I'd have to go look back. I believe it's somewhere hovering around a hundred. Um, and so that will also be part of it, is we wanna make sure that the chairs don't become so large, that it minimizes the number of people that we can have in there.
Well, and especially you mentioned the storage room is small.
It's pretty small, because we're trying to keep the room as big as we can. And so, you know, we, we didn't wanna oversize the storage. I mean, we may have to upsize the storage a little bit too as we get the furniture chosen. Um, but that's, that's something we're trying to figure out, is we wanna make sure and have that perfect marrying. Um, you know, one of the things, and I believe you all know this, is, um, ten million dollars is not very far of a budget for a library or for a building in general. And so one of our things has always been, how can we create the most space as possible for the library? And so we didn't wanna eat up too much of that with storage as well, um, and take that away from all the users who are using it.
Line those chairs against the back wall. Thank you.
Oddly enough, I have a question.
Yeah.
So we, we are gonna have the outside reading balcony. Um, I, I don't know what this, that, that is the south-facing, so it's gonna be not direct sunlight, but it's gonna get some. Is, is there specific furniture we need to think about for that, or is that the furniture that's gonna be the first to show wear and tear or?
So we will need to get, um, furniture that is meant for the outdoors, that has UV resistance. Because we have a fairly large overhang over that, you're gonna get shaded in the summer when you want it, um, but you should get sun in the winter when you want it. So that, you know, if you wanna go out and toast up in the sun while you read a book, you can. Um, but for that furniture, that, we will have to look at something that is specific for the outdoors and has UV, um, resistance to it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, uh, I don't wanna overspeak for April here, but that's an area where we may not have as many loose cushions or things like that, which can blow away or get tossed away.
Got it.
Yeah.
That is important, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, uh, I'm Laura. I'm with the city. And I just want to say that as this building is intended to be, uh, of use for the community, it's really an, um, a place where our community can really come together and not just read books, but really participate in so many other types of real quality of life and meaningful experiences. And so I appreciate from that perspective that the, that there's opportunity for the community to come and provide their input and to really design and make this building their own based on what their needs are. I don't know that other cities provide this many opportunities. And so the ability to work together with our community and our community partners, like the Friends of the Library, the Library Board of Trustees, really just, I think, makes this building more special and also gives us an opportunity to make it what we need it to be. And so I, I just want to extend that thank you to the community and to all the people who have provided their input and really worked hard to make this a reality, and to all of the library and the staff who've really just continued to make it a real library, even though it's not in a real library building right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I think we're finally done.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. Please feel free to put sticky notes up. They'll be at the library, I promise.
Thanks, April.
Thanks, Jonathan.